...and parties, the festivals of Inner Fire, be carnivals of community for us. Make our merry-making, family-making, community-making, and so be God-making for us. God of thermostats and tinderboxes, make of us during this cold winter season your faithful friend and firemaker. Amen.
And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Well, seeing no one coming for the Citizens' Comments portion, then we move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read tonight's Consent Agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on November 19, 2012. Item number two, ordinance number O-612. Matter of adapting an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to rezone property described as Lat. 319 of Lackmore Boulevard subdivision from Parking District to Woodward District, second reading. Item number three, recognitions and presentations. Presentation honoring the City of Berkeley's Recycler of the Year.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's Consent Agenda?
Move to approve tonight's Consent Agenda?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem and support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Yes.
Odweare?
It's implied, that's right. Now we move to the regular agenda, the first item. Ms. Prince, on tonight's regular agenda, please.
Recognizations and presentations. Matter of any recognition or presentation from the Consent Agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Platt Onson to read the presentation to the Recycler of the Year.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring the City of Berkeley's Recycler of the Year. Whereas America Recycles Day was November 15th, and whereas recycling household and commercial waste is important for preserving and protecting our natural resources for ourselves and future generations, and whereas recycling and composting rates in the United States have been steadily increasing from 7.7 percent of the waste stream in 1960 to approximately 34 percent in 2010, and whereas recycling creates jobs and promotes the growth of new industries in Michigan and the United States, and whereas the City of Berkeley is a member of the South Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, and Berkeley residents can collect and separate recyclable materials for curbside pickup or direct delivery to the SACR recycling facility, and whereas recycling provides financial benefits to the city because the city saves money on landfill tipping fees, and whereas recycling can help slow climate change and global warming by lowering greenhouse gas emissions associated with manufacturing products from virgin materials, and whereas the City of Berkeley is a proud member of the Clean Cities Initiative and seeks to encourage recycling as one method for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas the City of Berkeley recognizes the importance of citizen education and involvement in order to increase recycling rates in the city, and whereas the City of Berkeley believes citizens who take the initiative and lead by example in their neighborhoods play an important role in increasing recycling rates and should be honored for their efforts. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that Debbie Mesky be recognized as Berkeley Residential Recycler of the Year. Ms. Mesky is extremely knowledgeable on the subject of recycling. She does a lot of planning for events, and she always strives to include opportunities for recycling during these events. Ms. Mesky has a passion for recycling, which she often shares with others and often serves as a leader by example. And Section 2, that the city is grateful for the outstanding efforts of Debbie Mesky to increase recycling rates in the City of Berkeley. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, December 3, 2012, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Debbie, if you'd like to make a comment?
I believe the chair is here to present her something.
And the Chair of the Environmental Committee is also here with some presentation and remarks.
Thank you. Basically, I just want to thank Ms. Mesky, and we've got a very nice reusable bag that has our Berkeley Environmental Advisory Committee, and there's a nice gift certificate inside for you, as you will find. And I just want to thank Ms. Mesky as well for your leadership in this, and reiterate again just how important recycling is. And one of the key points that I know you're all going to be discussing very soon is kind of the budget and those sorts of things, and I want to remind all of our citizens as well at this time that increased recycling rates has a direct impact on our bottom line as we have to pay for garbage at some point, and recycling can help offset that. So I want to thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the honor. Recycling is dear to my heart. I encourage everyone to do it, and at my church and in my neighborhood, they call me the queen of recycling, just because I am so picky about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And you can get the resolution here.
Congratulations, Debbie.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Thanks for all you did.
Oh, thank you.
Good job today.
Thank you, Debbie. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Swearing In Ceremony. Matter of administering the oath of office to Public Safety Officer Scott Smith.
Well, I think that sends it back to you again, Ms. Prince.
Chief, what's anything?
Chief, do you would like to say something? Okay, following the swearing in.
I, Scott Smith.
I, Scott Smith.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of my office to the best of my ability.
Of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Scott came to us in July of 2011. Has a contract employee, serving the capacity of a firefighter, prisoner processor, and backup dispatcher. At that point, he was already a certified firefighter and was serving as a volunteer in the City of Huntington Woods. His regular job was that as a paramedic with Alliance, which is our medical provider, as you all know. There he held, and still holds, the certification of advanced life support. That was important to us at the time and remains so because it adds a little element of security for our citizens and our detainees. The more skills we have preserving, safeguarding life, the better. Scott brings that uniquely to our department. He has served very admirably in that capacity, so admirably that in July of 2012, we had an opening through a retirement. Scott was selected to fill that opening as an officer. At that point, he was shipped off to a police academy, and he has now graduated from that academy. So therefore, he holds certifications on both sides of our equation that we have to hold. I have found him to be a person of high intellect and integrity. He's an energetic worker, he's very patient, affable, and possesses great people skills, all necessary for our line of work. However, there is another gear. He has demonstrated when it's time to kick into that higher gear, he can do so very quickly. Also another trait that we have to have. He also presents as a great deal of something that's not so common, common sense. And regardless of what type of situation he's involved in, we see he can diffuse situations with people very, very well. He's been involved in community initiatives such as LID for Kids, fire open houses, or anything else he can seem to get his hands on. I am very pleased to welcome him to our department now as a Public Safety Officer, where I'm certain he will serve equally and properly as he did before. Scott?
Just want to say thank you to everyone, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity and definitely look forward to having a long career here. I also want to thank my family there here in the back. If you guys can stand up. This is my wife Monica, my daughter Scotty, my son Chris, and I just want to thank you guys also for your support. They had to deal with me while I made my journey here, and especially through the police academy. I know it was pretty hard on all of us, so thank you. And anyone else who I may have left out, I want to say thank you. My new extended family, I really appreciate you guys all being here. Your support really took me in and made me feel like another family member, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm so glad.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well done, Scott.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Come, welcome.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thanks for all you did.
Oh, thank you.
Good job today.
Thank you, Debbie. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Swearing In Ceremony. Matter of administering the oath of office to Public Safety Officer Scott Smith.
Well, I think that sends it back to you again, Ms. Prince.
Chief, wants to say something?
Chief, do you would like to say something? Okay, following the swearing in.
I, Scott Smith.
I, Scott Smith.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of my office to the best of my ability.
Of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Scott came to us in July of 2011. Has a contract employee, serving the capacity of a firefighter, prisoner processor, and backup dispatcher. At that point, he was already a certified firefighter and was serving as a volunteer in the City of Huntington Woods. His regular job was that as a paramedic with Alliance, which is our medical provider, as you all know. There he held, and still holds, the certification of advanced life support. That was important to us at the time and remains so because it adds a little element of security for our citizens and our detainees. The more skills we have preserving, safeguarding life, the better. And Scott brings that uniquely to our department. He has served very admirably in that capacity, so admirably that in July of 2012, we had an opening through a retirement. Scott was selected to fill that opening as an officer. At that point, he was shipped off to a police academy, and he has now graduated from that academy. So therefore, he holds certifications on both sides of our equation that we have to hold. I have found him to be a person of high intellect and integrity. He's an energetic worker, he's very patient, affable, and possesses great people skills, all necessary for our line of work. However, there is another gear. He has demonstrated when it's time to kick into that higher gear, he can do so very quickly. Also another trait that we have to have. He also presents as a great deal of something that's not so common, common sense. And regardless of what type of situation he's involved in, we see he can diffuse situations with people very, very well. He's been involved in community initiatives such as LID for Kids, fire open houses, or anything else he can seem to get his hands on. I am very pleased to welcome him to our department now as a Public Safety Officer, where I'm certain he will serve equally and properly as he did before. Scott?
Just want to say thank you to everyone, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity and definitely look forward to having a long career here. I also want to thank my family there here in the back. If you guys can stand up. This is my wife Monica, my daughter Scotty, my son Chris, and I just want to thank you guys also for your support. They had to deal with me while I made my journey here, and especially through the police academy. I know it was pretty hard on all of us, so thank you. And anyone else who I may have left out, I want to say thank you. My new extended family, I really appreciate you guys all being here. Your support really took me in and made me feel like another family member, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm so glad.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Well done, Scott.
Congratulations.
Welcome forward.
Congratulations.
I don't think those are covered.
Again, thank you to all the colleagues from the Public Safety Department who came this evening in support of Scott. It is great to see that collegial spirit in our department. And now, Ms. Prince, we are ready to read item number three, please.
Motion Number M-7512. Matter of authorizing City Manager to enter into an agreement with LSL Planning to provide professional services to prepare a wayfinding system for the Berkeley DDA in the amount of $17,675 plus reimbursable expenses.
Is there a motion to approve M-7512?
Motion to approve M-7512.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support by Mayor Protem Turbrack. Ms. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The only other items I'd like to add to what the city clerk just said is that the DDA board has reviewed this and that they are recommending it to the city council. Please know that a budget adjustment will be forthcoming for this because this isn't something that we had included in our budget. However, we have looked at our funds, and we do believe that we have sufficient funds to cover this. We did meet with LSL representatives to discuss this issue. Now, probably what is on everybody's mind is to explain what exactly is a wayfinding study, and what exactly is that going to do for us? Now, I'd be happy to answer that question, but since we have the key principles here with us this evening, I hope they don't mind if I put them on the spot just a little. Mr. Brad Strader is here with us this evening, and he is one of the managing partners for LSL, and I know that his other employee as well will be doing Josh, and forgive me your last name.
Fox.
So you?
C.K.S. Sure. Brad Strader from LSL. Thank you, Jane, and delighted to be potentially selected to work with Berkeley again. We worked with you on the master plan, we worked with the DDA on the parking study, and we had submitted a proposal. When we did the parking study for the DDA, one of the things we found was that there was parking available generally within the district, but people didn't know how to find it. Some of the public parking is not very clear, and with some of the signs and penalties for people and threats of towing, that people are uncomfortable if they have a bad experience coming to Berkeley and parking once and being towed or ticketed or get a sticker on their window, they may not come back. So we had recommended in that that the DDA would look at a wayfinding to help direct people to parking. So that was the initial thought, and as the DDA thought about it, they wanted to ramp that up a little bit and have a wayfinding system a little bit more like Birmingham or Royal Oak that helps people at the entrances to Berkeley to know that they're in Berkeley, to direct them to key destinations on Coolidge and 12 Mile, and then direct them to parking, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists, help direct them around the business district too. So we're kind of looking at a layered system at entryway features, bringing all the signs and some conformity or consistency, and then help people find parking and so forth, and cleaning up maybe some of the signage. Some of the DDA members said, can we look at this of just having simpler signs and fewer signs so there's not such a hodgepodge? So that will be one of the things that we'll do. Our process starts with sort of an inventory of what's out there and a walking or driving tour with city staff and a couple of members of the DDA. We'll be meeting with the DDA Subcommittee to put the program together, and at the end having a presentation on the draft. This will include like a map of wayfinding recommendations and then design drawings, and on the team, I should mention Hamilton Anderson Associates out of Detroit. Their sign designers are also part of the team, and they will be coming up with concepts for the design and alternatives, and then doing the final design signs. So that's kind of an overview. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions regarding this very important topic? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and Mr. Strader, thank you for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure to see you and your colleagues again. More of a comment with a little bit of a question in here as well, so certainly I appreciate the work that you've done and the framing that you bring to us tonight in terms of what wayfinding is and some of its potential benefits, not only to the visitors that this would be their first time into our community, but also for those that are looking for a little bit extra information on a place that they have yet to experience here as well. Question in terms of the anticipated duration of the project and the degree to which there's citizen or resident involvement in terms of open houses and things. Could you elaborate on those a little bit, please?
Yeah, the duration, we looked at like a four-month process to be concluding in March or April, so we could get a lot of the work done, and the idea would be so that it could be something for the DDA to start in the spring if they wanted to at least have some priorities there. We did have an option for a public open house, and the DDA did not elect to go with that option. We could still talk about it later, so the fee did not include an open house. We would provide information to the steering committee so that the steering committee could host, or the DDA could host, an open house. What we do have is a presentation at the end on the draft plan, so here's the draft wayfinding plan, here are the signs, and get public comment and business comment at that point. But if the committee decides they want to have an open house, we have a couple, we could either add to the fee, or we could give them the materials and they could host it. I know with the parking study, we ended up doing an open house on our own anyway, and we'd like to be flexible and work with the city, so I think if it becomes important to do something, we can work something out.
Great. Thank you for that as well. I love that we have the options available to work not only within the committee, but to reach out to the community and to get those input, so I appreciate that flexibility. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, this is just the wayfinding study for our people at home. This does not include any of the signage or anything like that. That's just a study.
It's the study and come up with the sign design, but the actual final specs of the sign and paying for the sign and installation is not included. We'll just say what type of signs and where they should go and priorities for signs.
That would be Phase 2.
That'd be Phase 2, exactly.
Which we might be discussing later on and handling down the road. I want to make sure our people at home understood that.
That's a good clarification.
Signs in March.
That's right. Very good.
Any other questions, discussion points? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Quickly, you know, one of the things that we talk about is creating a sense of place, and it seems odd that something like a sign would be that big of a deal, but literally just Saturday night after the parade, my friends who had come into town for the parade and to stay after and go to Amici's with us said, you know, you guys really need more public parking. And I said, I bet you just couldn't find it. And they said, well, it's just right here. And I said, no, there's actually some on the north side of 12 Mile. And they said, oh, I don't know where that is, I don't know how to get to it. So it's interesting that that little perception of it's too hard to come to the businesses in Berkeley because it's too difficult to park, or something to that effect, could actually impact our businesses in that way, but it really, it's the small things, it's the small experiences that add up. So it sounds like it's a sign, but it's really a communication plan and a promotion plan and all the little things that go into making an experience with Berkeley that much more pleasant, so I'm supportive of moving forward, though I know we're tight on budget, but it sounds like we're going to be okay to at least get this underway.
Exactly. I think it also agree that this will make a big difference for business community as well as for residents and visitors as they move through the city. They will have a sense of direction of where they can find things more easily, and I like the idea of keeping things uniform, so that once you get signage that's uniform, it helps the eye, you know, to zero in quickly on where you need to get to. So I'm very pleased as well that we are undertaking this task. Are there any other items with regard to this topic?
Just a small comment, Your Honor. I will be working with Mr. Strader, and also the city planner will be working with us as well, Amy Vanson, and our illustrious Public Works Director. So they'll have a lot of input from staff to make sure that we get them the information they need as quickly as possible, and then work with the DDA so that we can allow, inform the public as to where we stand on this. We will come back to the city council as well and give you an update report on that.
And of course, we have worked with Mr. Strader in the past, so, I mean, he is very familiar with our systems and our people.
Yes.
I've worked with Derek when he was in Romulus too, so even Derek and I have a longstanding relationship as well, so he wouldn't admit to it, probably.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Will this include school facilities? Because I know I get a lot of questions, where's the football field and where are the ice arena for the people playing hockey?
This might be something where council may want to give some input when we get into the process, so there may be a survey. We've talked about it with Keith Logston, but what are the key destinations? It probably won't be individual businesses, because where do you drop the line, but the high school, the football field schools, key destinations that are public or quasi-public, you know, those would be the things that would be on the wayfinding.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you again, and this is part of the city's master plan, calls out wayfinding initiatives, and so if we chose to proceed with this, this would be a significant step forward in realizing one of those objectives as well, and that notion of place can't be understated, the ability to help those who are new to the area or those that are well familiar with where most things are, but the little things make a difference. So it's initiative in alignment with our master plan, and I think the opportunity to help provide guidance above and beyond just the downtown area to highlight some of the key facilities and destination spots across our community is instrumental, so I'm really pleased that that's in the scope as well. Thank you.
Very good. Well, seems to be an enthusiastic level of support for this project. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Odweare?
Yes.
If I could just add, the first public workshop on the Woodward Avenue Transit Alternatives Analysis was held here in Berkeley this evening from 5:00 to 7:00 over at the community center, and I had recommended to the SEMCOG and the people working on it that the first workshop should be in Berkeley, because we'd find a very interested group and pleasant to deal with, and it would be a good testing ground, and I want to compliment the people that were there tonight. We had a very good turnout, we had about 95 people, lived up to all the expectations they gave everybody for the residents and business operators in Berkeley, and provided a lot of good and constructive input. For those that are watching, there is a series of other workshops that we held over the next couple of weeks at other locations, so you're certainly welcome to come to any of those, and I think there might be a link on the city's webpage, so if you're interested and couldn't make it tonight, please try to make one of those workshops.
Very good. Thank you, Brad. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M-7612. Matter of approving the MyDeal purchase of a 2012 utility work machine and attachments for the total cost of $54,993 to Carlton Equipment Company located at 31231 Schoolcraft Road, Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Is there a motion to approve M-7612?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, to help me explain this unbelievable piece of equipment that we're asking the city council to consider, I've asked our Public Works Director to come up and give us this presentation and explain not just what this machine is going to do, but also talk a little bit about the funding as well. My understanding is that we're going to be, this machine is going to replace a 1975 Ford tractor with a front broom, and when you take a look at what we have and what we're hoping to have, there is a big change. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schiller.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Before you tonight is a purchase of a 2012 utility work machine tractor by Bobcat. It's called a Toolcat, and it replaces a 1975 Ford tractor that we've been using that has a front broom. The key to this machine is it will perform a variety of tasks. The front-end attachments are interchangeable. We can go from a broom to a snow thrower, to a bucket, to pallet forks. We can even rent specialized piece of equipment as well. So we can perform a variety of tasks, just like looking for DPW workers that are flexible and can do lots of things, this piece of equipment can do the same. It's an enclosed cab, and I've taken some pictures, and I hope that everyone was able to see those. I think that helps paint the picture for us a little bit on what this piece of equipment very easy from my end, and I'm going to be looking to utilize MyDeal more and more in the future. The city of Berkeley is a member of MyDeal. We pay a very meager annual amount to be a part of MyDeal. I've heard other departments have utilized it as well, so I was excited to get introduced to it, and I've talked to MyDeal personally on a couple of occasions. And again, I was shocked of how easy it was to utilize it. We tried out many different machines and settled on this Toolcat. I also contacted several references, including the city of Wixom, the University of Michigan. Both those agencies have purchased multiple Toolcats and used them on a daily basis. Funds were allocated for this purchase under the 2012-2013 Capital Equipment Replacement Plan with the account number shown, and we will certainly be auctioning off the tractor once we take in this new piece of equipment, test it out, make sure everything is in order. We will take the Ford tractor to auction. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the piece of equipment.
Are there any questions for Derek? Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. More comments. I looked over all the specs, and I think that you or Sean did the specs on it, but you did an excellent job. The options that were chosen appear to really complement the thing and make it very usable, particularly the high-flow hydraulics and the seven-point attaching hitch.
The high-flow hydraulics, we can give thanks to Sean Young for that suggestion, our foreman, who added that item, so thanks to him.
That was a good ad. The specs look real good. Looks like it'll do what I said, and I'll vote for it without one stipulation I talked to you about earlier.
Sounds good.
I gotta get a ride in.
It is an all-wheel-drive vehicle, so we can use it very easily, obviously, in the wintertime, yet it's heavy enough where it can still move snow. We verified that as well. So we're looking forward to getting the machine very quickly.
Very good. Counselor Baker?
Thank you again, Your Honor. And Derek, thank you for all the work that you've done to prepare this. I also reviewed the specs and was impressed with the variety of equipment and selections that we chose. And I also want to, again, celebrate the fact that we're using the MyDeal program. I think that's another example of the ways in which the communities can rally together and work with existing initiatives to save money. And the numbers that you talk about are significant, and we talk about equipment like this, especially when we're retiring an asset from 1975. It certainly has been long overdue, and the opportunity presents itself here with this equipment. I'm glad that we're taking it. My question is just with timing. If we were to proceed with this, how long would the ordering process take, and when might we expect delivery and those kinds of things?
I am told the vehicle is on hand, so, you know, it could be a few days and it could be in our possession. So there's not a long lead time on this item. It's not a specialized piece of equipment or anything. It is in stock.
Great, so we'd be able to put it in service relatively?
Yes, this winter. That's the intent.
Some kind of a retirement celebration for the tractor?
Certainly, yes.
I think that's in order as well.
I think that tractor might be able to qualify for Cruise Fest. It has so many, as a matter of fact, on a very technical point here, that tractor is older than a couple of members of this council. And it has served well.
I agree.
Out of the running of the commons on this purchase. This is an important purchase, and a reminder to the residents that, you know, we keep our equipment going here as long as possible. And to keep a tractor going for 37 years is an enormous tribute to the work of the mechanics over there and the staff at DPW. And when we get new equipment, it looks new for a long time. It is managed carefully and well, and maintained well. And so we're very proud of the work you do at DPW with regard to the equipment that we purchased.
And there's pride in the equipment, and keeping the equipment clean is important, and it's something that we talk about.
Very good. Thank you, Derek. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-7712, matter of authorizing the city manager to seek requests for proposal, RFP, for the city attorney contract, and the mayor's appointment of an ad-hoc committee consisting of three members of the city council to review proposals for the city attorney and make recommendations of a finalist pool of candidates for the city council to consider.
Is there a motion to approve M-7712?
Move to approve, 7712.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekell?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
You know, counsel, this is an appointee of the city council, and the city attorney's contract did expire on September 30th of 2012. Please know that the city attorney has agreed to continue his current terms until this process is complete. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Sessa, our discussion on the RFP? Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, since that motion passed, and a provision in that is that the mayor gets to appoint three members of the committee, I will appoint, as chairman of that committee, Mayor Protam Turbrack, Councilmember Stedman, and Councilmember Blanchard. And they have all agreed to serve. So thank you very much for doing that, and you will bring back recommendations to us. And then, as a body, as a council, we will take it from there. Are there any questions on the committee? Very good. Thank you. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six?
Resolution number R-4812, matter of adapting a resolution of the city council of the city of Berkeley, electing to comply with the provisions of Public Act 152 of 2011.
Is there a motion to approve R-4812?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protam Turbrack. Ms. Sessa.
Counsel, I'd like to just begin by giving you just a very quick summary of what we're asking the city council to consider. And I've also asked our finance director to assist me with this as well, and if I leave anything out, to please assist me with this matter, okay? So this is a very important item, and it's not as simple as people might think to explain. So I know that I've given a lot of details in the memorandum that I presented to you. Basically, what I'm asking the city council to do is that in accordance with Public Act 152 of 2011, a public employer, such as the city of Berkeley, that offers or contributes to a medical benefit plan for its active employees or elected officials must make a determination as to how the public employer will fund those medical plan benefits for its active employees. Now, for the public out there, this plan went into effect on September 24, 2012. Excuse me? The law. The law. I apologize. The law, not an act. It is the law. Thank you, Mr. Suboda.
You're welcome.
Now, the other thing that the public must know is that declarations of funding have to be made prior to January 1st of each calendar year. So every year now, in accordance with the law, the city council will have to take this up for consideration. And again, without going into any more detail, let me just explain that, again, according to the state law, a municipality has three options to fund health care for active employees. And they include, one, which is the default option. This is offering a medical benefit plan that does not cost the municipality a yearly premium or aggregate cost that exceeds an amount as established by the state of Michigan's Department of Treasury. This option is known to us as the default hard cap requirement. The second option is to declare by a majority vote of the governing body that as a public employer, the city will not pay more than 80% of the total annual costs of all medical benefits that its plan offers. Annual costs will be those costs as prescribed in Section 4.2 of Public Act 152 of 2011. Now, again, this information has been provided to the city council, but for anybody who has any questions, we'd be happy to provide this information to them. And then, lastly, by two-thirds vote of its governing body each year, a local unit of government may exempt itself from the requirements of the state law for the next succeeding year. Now, we have looked at this law, and we've looked specifically on the established limits for health care funding as they've been set. And for the city of Berkeley this time, the city will not be able to meet the state-imposed health care cap funding limits, which now means that the city council needs to examine each of these options in order so that we can comply with this law. And obviously, the city can choose any of these three options.
Jane, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, council members?
Yes.
The first step is the default option. Do we fall under the default option? And we don't. Okay, we don't meet that option. So now, council has to consider option two, which is the 80/20, or the opt-out option, okay? And that's what's before you this evening. Mrs. Sessa's recommendation and staff's recommendation is to, is the opt-out option, okay? And Jane?
No, please, go ahead. Go ahead. I was gonna go with the next one. Go ahead.
Okay, is the opt-out option. We have already negotiated significant concessions in the Medicare, I'm sorry, in the medical area. We are starting contract negotiations coming up in the next six months, and we'll be tackling a number of issues along with the medical area of benefits. And it is recommended that we opt out, because we are going into, because we've received these significant savings and we've received, and we are going into contract negotiation. So, again, you have two choices, the 80/20 or the opt-out, and staff and Mrs. Sessa's recommendation is the opt-out option. And that is the way the resolution is presented to you this evening.
Counsel, for the record, I am recommending that we do opt out of this option as declared by our finance director for the reasons that he explained. We have, the city employees have made major material concessions already, and we're going to continue that same thought as we move into negotiations. One thing that you should know is that you need to make a decision one way or another on this issue. If we don't do this, we will, it'll be considered that the city will be taking into consideration the default option, which is a hard cap option that's provided by the state of Michigan's Department of Treasury. So, again, we are requesting the city council to make a decision. And as I stated again, we are recommending that, I'm recommending and our finance director as well, is that the opt-out option be considered. Please know that this would require a two-thirds majority vote by the city council. And then, lastly, please know that whatever your decision is tonight, as far as it affects our retirees, that they will not be affected by your decision this evening.
Very good.
So with that, the finance director are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Mayor Protam Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify for me, Mr. Finance Director, so we've got two options. We're over the hard cap by whatever that number is. So, you know, we don't qualify number ones. We've got some options. The number, the two options, the 80/20 option, if we went that route, that would cause higher costs to be transferred to our employees right away.
That is correct.
Right. And in light of what you mentioned, the concessions and everything else that the unions have, you know, they've worked with us so well in the past to keep things going. You know, personally, I would be opposed to anything that would push anything extra on them at this time, and I have a feeling that's why you're recommending that. So I certainly agree that opting out at this point for the city is the best move for all of us in light of everything that our employees have done. It makes the most sense, and I certainly do not want to try to slam anything else down their throats. So I'm supportive of this, and I appreciate the recommendation to opt out this year.
Thank you. Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is also only for one year, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
We have to do this again next year. So it's not forever. We opt out now and then go into contract negotiations, we may have a different result next year.
Correct.
Okay. So for that reason, I'm supporting this also. Thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for the additional explanation around this issue. It certainly is a complex one, and I think not only about the amount of concessions that all of our employees have done for us to the tune of just shy of $800,000. This is an important thing to not undo, some of the concessions that have been made and the trust and the balance that we have in place. I guess just point of clarification that when we say opt out, what we're not doing is opting out of any existing health care options for our employees. And so what this wouldn't do is jeopardize any of the existing conditions that they have or the primary care or any of that doctor stuff. So when we're talking about opt out, what we're not saying is no more health care or anything like that. What we're doing is saying that we're seeking to preserve our flexibility so that as we approach the negotiation season, we can do so with our eyes open and all of the tools available to engage in meaningful dialogue. And with that understanding, I'm also in support of moving forward in that direction.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're absolutely correct. We will come back each year to the city council for reconsideration of this item.
Thank you. Counselor Blad Onson?
This is a little bit of a repeat, but I think it's really important for everyone to remember that the budget got balanced over the last year and probably the year before that, thanks to our employees. It wasn't cuts in services to our residents. They felt very little pain through those difficult budget times. It's our employees who are really fantastic, who have managed to keep things going and provide that high level of service while making concessions, going without raises and everything else. So I just want to remind everyone that we have the balanced, we have them to thank for the balanced budget, and I think that they've done quite a bit for the residents of Berkeley. I think giving them this little bit above what the, and it's little, little bit above what the governor has sent down to us is really the least we can do with what they've done for us up to this point.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? I agree with my colleagues, and all of them have spoken eloquently on the generosity and dedication of our employees. And Lisa is absolutely right. We have balanced the budget for the last couple of years because of the sacrifices and concessions made by the employees of this city. And for that reason alone, I'm supporting this item. It, by the way, will take five votes to pass this one. So Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you, City Council.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M-7812, matter of accepting a gift from city manager Jane Baisde Sessa, which she received as an honoriam for a presentation at the 2012 ICMA conference in the amount of $1,000.
Is there a motion to approve M-7812?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. Sessa, tell us about this $1,000.
Your Honor, if it wasn't for the city of Berkeley allowing me to attend this session, I would not have received these dollars. But even so, I believe still that this is something that belongs to the city of Berkeley. And while I wasn't expecting, I must admit, this large amount of dollars, whatever they would have given me, it would come back to the city of Berkeley. So it's really the other way around. I need to thank the city of Berkeley for allowing me to do this, to attend this session that they, that you've allowed me to attend each and every year with ICMA. I spoke regarding the public safety model, and this was a special session, and the individuals that attended the conference had to spend extra dollars. And I believe we had a tremendous amount of response from cities all over the United States regarding the safety, public safety model. As a matter of fact, I'm really proud to say that the ICMA group has asked me to join them to attend six more sessions, and I don't think I can attend six more sessions to help promote and help address this issue. But certainly, this is something that I think is important, and to share this knowledge and this information to other communities is important. And I guess that I wasn't expecting this, and it gives me great honor to return this back to the city of Berkeley where it belongs. So with that?
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we just got done talking about employees and sacrificing, and when I first heard this from Ms. Baisde Sessa, that she would like to return the $1,000 to us, I thought teamwork. And she's sacrificed over the years too, and here she's going beyond that call of duty again and thinking of the city first and recommending that we accept her $1,000, and I thank you very much.
Counselor Stedman?
I'd like to thank you for that, and I'd also like to thank you for going to some of these events and being involved on a national level with the ICMA and other organizations, because you bring information to the rest of the country about the city of Berkeley, and I think that's highly important for us. And you also bring back a lot of good ideas from them.
Very good. Counselor Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to echo my colleagues' sentiments of gratitude to you for your advocacy both within the city and our community and then across the country and even international when I think of the public safety model. We've had visitors from overseas to come in and learn about this. I think the importance of raising visibility about interesting programs like this is crucial to not only help advance collaboration, sharing of ideas, and learning from one another, but also, to the well-made point, that it's representing the city, and Berkeley is a leader in so many ways, and it's just a great opportunity to help share that news. And so it's with great pleasure that, we're glad to see this coming to us here tonight, and thank you. I think, and if I may, could you give us just a little paragraph about ICMA and what it is, what do the acronyms stand for, and how it is that you're involved in that? It's a tremendous organization.
Very proud of that organization. ICMA stands for the International City and County Managers Association, and it is an organization of, oh, I know it's more than 3,000, because anyone in the United States and abroad, from, they come from England, Australia, New Zealand, oh my God, everywhere throughout the world. And they're all managers, and I'm proud to say that I was once a member of the ICMA board. And this is, ICMA is known as the top organization that provides training information for city managers from all over the United States. And to sit on that board not too long ago was quite a great honor. And so ICMA is the premier organization for city managers, and it gives us all types of training information, educational information, and it's a place where all the city managers from all over the United States and beyond come together for a few days to learn and gather information about each other. So it's the biggest networking group of people, especially city managers and other managers as well. So it's a tremendous experience, and I'm really proud to be representing the city of Berkeley.
Thank you. I'm sure it is a bit of a mystery to people at home watching to see that their city council has to vote to accept $1,000. But that's how government works. And so, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-7812?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack? This past Saturday evening during the Holiday Lights Parade, the streets were filled, the corners, the streets, inside the streets everywhere, children, adults, grandparents, visitors from other cities. And I want to thank, first of all, co-chairs Paul Swayze and Cindy Coon, their committee, the DPW did their work for it, and everybody that was a part of it, all the volunteers, for putting on such a great, great evening. And the weather cooperated. I know some of us wanted snow, but you know what? I was fine with the way it was. On December, Tuesday, December 11th, that's a week from tomorrow, Brooks Gibbs is going, the author of Love Hate, is coming to our schools. And he's a national bestselling author, youth motivational speaker, and anti-bullying expert. And as many of us have heard about the anti-bullying and us working together with the anti-bullying, you're going to have an opportunity to hear Brooks Gibbs. At 1:00 PM, there'll be a student program at Norup International School. At 2:15 PM, there'll be a student program at Anderson Middle School. And at 6:00 PM, there'll be a parent program at Norup International School. All districts and parents are, all district parents are welcome. And if you have any questions, feel free to call Robin Weiss, counselor at NIS, and her number's 248-837-8310, or email her at rwice@berkleyschools.org. And I hope a lot of people come out to that. Last week, I was able to go to night court at the Oak Park Courts, and Judge Wittenberg, Judge Friedman Apple, and Judge Gubel presented to the students, they had mock cases, one a felony, one a misdemeanor, of how things work and how the students would work, or how the court system would work with minors and/or adults. The room was packed. The entire city council chambers was packed. Kids were on the floor. People were outside the doors both sides. Sergeant Pete Kelly represented us as our youth officer, did a phenomenal job at it. And I just think we are very fortunate to have a program like that. We're already talking about, we need a bigger venue next year. And this Saturday night is the festival lights, starts the Eight Days of Hanukkah. So anyone that celebrates Hanukkah, I want to wish them a happy Hanukkah. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Plaidonson?
Couple of things from me this evening. You'll remember last week Nina from Oakland County was here talking about the Woodward Five Sustainability Partnership and the work that we've been doing to put together measurement, baselines, things like that, to sort of see where Berkeley falls and where we have room for improvement. I thought I'd bring back a few of the key statistics that I found interesting from some of that baseline work that they've done. Just a couple of points on some places that we're doing better than other communities. So, and they're a little technical, so I'm going to read them. We talk a lot about the idea of professionals and young professionals in Berkeley and sort of some of the influx that we've seen over the last few years. And there are two statistics in here where we are doing better than other communities. One is residents as a whole with bachelor's degree or higher degree, so percent of the population. Our baseline in 2010 was 42% of the population. For young professionals, so ages 24 to 35, we have 70% of our population with bachelor's degrees. So I thought that was an interesting story about Berkeley as a whole. And I think there's actually, when you look at the numbers for unemployment in Berkeley, they're actually lower than the national average, and I suspect this factors into that a little bit. Some other places that were better, which this will come as no surprise to the council, as just a few years ago, we were ranked one of the best, most affordable cities, but we are better in terms of affordability. So percent of income used on housing ownership, we're looking at 33%. So that's better than the average as well. And there is one more, I think, that I found. Oh, those were worse. All right. Oh, and this one is for Derek. Our condition of roads is actually better than other communities. I know every now and again, oh, Dan looks surprised. I know, especially as the winter months hit and the salt starts to do some wear and tear, occasionally we encounter some bad spots, but I am happy to report that as of 2011 baseline, we are actually better than other communities in our condition of roads. Room for improvement, as all communities have some room for improvement, I'm sure. Racial diversity index, we are, we're worse than communities around us, as well as same-sex households. We are worse than other communities as well. And that's as of 2010. So we've had a couple of years since the last census, et cetera, was done. And this is going to be my segue into my second item. Residential recycling ratio for the environmental committee that was here, sadly, worse than other communities. I know we have a fantastic recycling program, but we have room for improvement. I think there are a lot of things out there that are recyclable that people just do not realize that they can throw in the bin. I know I'm often surprised at how much you can put in your bin and how easy it is to recycle. So the ratio of pounds of waste recycled per household compared to pounds sent to landfill, we are sadly below the other communities there. And then finally, the percent of the population biking or walking to work. We are at a mere 3% of our population biking or walking to work. Now, Jack's surprised. Yes, I know.
I walk downstairs and go to my computer.
So that 3% is the perfect segue into my second item in areas of room for improvement. So for many years, I was working in downtown Royal Oak, and you know, as much as I possibly could, as long as weather would permit, I rode my bike to work in downtown Royal Oak. I no longer work quite that close to home, so I can't really ride my bike the 35 miles across several freeways to get me there now. But one of the barriers is getting there from one community to the next. So safely crossing Woodward, or I needed to get across 11 mile, and it's, of course, safer to ride in the road. And so how does that look with morning traffic, which is always interesting? And so on Wednesday, December 12th, so next Wednesday, 12, 12, 12, at 7:00 PM at the Royal Oak Public Library, the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board, Huntington Woods Environmental Committee, Berkeley Environmental Advisory Committee, Woodward Avenue Action Association, and the Michigan Trails and Greenway Alliance are coming together to host a bike summit. And it's sort of like, what does that mean? No, it's not just a big bike club where everybody's coming together to show off their rides. The idea is that we're often talking about how to make these connections by foot or bike from one community to the next. And as the governor starts talking about ways to work together, our environmental committees are doing that very thing. So the purpose of the meeting is to actually put together a framework of what we want. So marked bicycle routes, charos, which are those, share the road arrows, bicycle boulevards, road diets. What does it need to look like from one city to the next? What are those connection points to allow people to get from downtown Royal Oak to downtown Berkeley and vice versa into some of those communities around us? So residents and people who walk and bike through Berkeley, Birmingham, Claussen, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Royal Oak, and Southfield are welcome and encouraged to attend. There's also guest speakers. So Todd Scott from Detroit Greenway, he's the Detroit Greenways Coordinator, sorry, for Michigan Trails and Greenway Alliance. And I know many of you have met him at some local events. Heather Carmona, who you've also met, is the Executive Director of Woodward Avenue Action Association, and Tom Dusky, who is the Green Cruise Coordinator, which if you've been to Ferndale the weekend before the Dream Cruise, to see all the non-motorized, see the non-motorized event, that's what that is. So he'll be speaking as well. So it's really meant for community input. I know there's also, I suspect you're going to mention, a chamber holiday party that night. But luckily, this is at 7:00, so there's time to go to both. So I will be there. I hope that some of you or some of our planning commissioners will be able to join me. It's really important to make those connections between communities if we're really going to make this area a little more favorable than for the 3% who are braving the roads right now. And that was, that was all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just very little today. I just want to, yeah, I know. I was going to yield my time to Steve, but you have already taken all of the time. I just want to thank everybody who was also involved in the Holiday Lights Parade. There are a few events that we do every year, but this more than probably any is one that I really look forward to, you know, getting, to be part of the parade, but to see again all the residents and how happy they are, and all of the, you know, the city staff coming together in departments, and, you know, the decorated DPW trucks and the fire trucks. And I mean, it's great. It's a very strong community event. We always have a lot of people there, of course. The visit from Santa is probably the most popular thing other than city council walking down. But at any rate, it's something that I'm certainly proud to always be a part of, to continue to be a part of, whether I'm, you know, in the parade or simply as a resident. And again, I just want to thank everybody involved, the committee, the junior women's, and now I have no time left to yield, but that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I would have gladly taken that time. Thank you.
I know.
I know we'll need it. All right. Introductions, chapter one.
[laughing]
It's a dark and stormy night. No, I did want to also thank everyone for all their hard work with the Holiday Lights Parade last Saturday. Tremendous work on behalf of the committee, the volunteers, the strong business representation to help support this, the tremendous generosity from all the volunteers who gave not only their time, but also those whom either were or maybe even not able to attend, who contributed financially to help make this a success. It seems like such a thing, a simple thing, to get a bunch of people to just walk down the street for a little while. But my goodness, all that goes into it to make it such a fantastic event, and it's more than just a parade. It's the whole afternoon with all the other events for the families and children. Tremendous. So thank you to everybody. Great support from Public Safety and everywhere along the line here to help make that a success. It was mentioned a little earlier in tonight's agenda, but in terms of some transit initiatives, two quick updates I'd like to share. First at the state level, those of us who follow transit and who doesn't these days, there's a thing called the Regional Transit Authority, RTA is an acronym we use. It's an entity, and it needs legislative and governor's approval in order to come to be. The RTA legislation, the legislation creating such a transit authority, has been in process many times over many years. And its latest version, which I believe is the 24th time they've worked through this, has gotten further than pretty much any of the predecessors. And we think that's because of the combination of desire, interest, awareness, that sense of place that we all need in our various communities, and a real appreciation for the fact that of every metropolitan city in the entire United States of any size, of interest like Detroit and the region is, we're the only ones without an effective transit system. And all that that implies in terms of ability to get to work, if you're unable to walk or bike there, you know, how can you get there in other means besides a vehicle? Access to employers and employees to get to those jobs, access to entertainment options, so many benefits of a transit system that gives us options to choose. It unclogs the roads, so those who choose to take transit aren't taking up the space for someone who chooses to drive, so that's a great thing as well. So anyway, the Regional Transit Authority, RTA legislation, has made it through the Senate, the Michigan State Senate, and it's now on its way to the House. So our friends in the House have an opportunity to act here in this abbreviated session post-election and before the new year, and we are seeking to continue to ask for their support in advancing that. The governor's indicated he's interested and willing to sign and support this legislation, so there's certainly proper signals that something like this would be strongly considered. So we're pleased on that front, and I want to thank all of the folks here in our community and elsewhere who have been an active stakeholder in advocating on behalf of this important step forward. So we'll see. There's still a lot to go, but it's looking positive anyway. Something that has happened here in Berkeley, as was mentioned earlier, tonight in our Berkeley Community Center, was the first of seven town halls or open houses talking about Woodward Avenue, and in particular, Woodward Avenue Alternatives Analysis. And in short, what the Alternatives Analysis is, is a conversation, a discussion, and a study to see how and what ways we might choose to do transit along Woodward Avenue. Now, Berkeley certainly shares Woodward with 10 other municipalities. There's 11 that share Woodward's 27 miles. And together, we are having a series of open houses. Berkeley's was the first one. It was an opportunity to have a strong beginning, and as was mentioned earlier, over 95 folks came and asked questions and engaged with the project team and with transit leaders to help better understand the nature of the initiative and what it has, what the possibilities are for us. As its name implies, an Alternatives Analysis is a way to look at a series of alternatives and then analyze those options for appropriateness, for fitness, for safety, for environmental impact, for the degree to which a particular style of transit along Woodward Avenue would be reliable, dependable, affordable, safe. Those are all parts of an Alternatives Analysis. This was the first step in a public outreach. There will be additional sessions. If you haven't had the opportunity to make it tonight, there are additional sessions in this stretch. There'll be two in Detroit, one in Ferndale, one in Royal Oak, one in Birmingham, and one in Pontiac. So again, that entire stretch over the next, this week and next. There's a flyer on the City of Berkeley's website if you're interested to see some of those other locations. And again, there'll be additional sessions in the spring as the project moves forward. And again, what we celebrate is the opportunity to have this dialogue with those of us who would use this system, the residents, the businesses, the visitors to the area, and the citizens that would leverage a transit system. So thank you for those who were able to attend tonight, for, again, all those that volunteered their time to help support and set this up and run on the project team. That's exciting things. And finally, Canadian sociologist Marshall McLuhan once said, "Societies have always been shaped more by the nature of the media by which they communicate than by the content of the communication." And again, that goes, societies have always been shaped more by the nature of the media by which they communicate than by the content of the communication. And that came to mind when I thought about today, as a matter of fact. December 3rd is the 20th anniversary of something happening having to do with communication technology, and that is the text message. It's 20 years ago today that the very first text message was ever sent.
What was it?
And it's a fantastic little story, and I'll share a little piece of it. So the idea came from a Finnish engineer named Matti Mackinson. In 1984, he was studying telecom technologies and thinking about, how could we use such a thing besides just voice? What could we do about sending information across the telecommunications system? There's a communication researcher named Fridhem Hillebrand, who figured out, looking at sentence structure and things like that, that about 160 characters was what you needed to communicate a reasonable sentence. I seem to be the exception to that rule, but apart from that, 160 characters of sentence is about what most folks can use. And so I thought that was pretty interesting in and of itself. So between '84 and '92, a series of studies and technology advances and things led to this very night, 20 years ago, by a British engineer named Neil Papworth. So remember, this is the holiday season. We're coming up on very festive times, and his very first text did not need 160 characters. He simply said, "Mr. Mayor, Happy Christmas." Is what he said. Happy Christmas. And hard to believe, but since in those 20 years, now almost 75% of all mobile users send text messages. That equates to over 2.4 billion with a B, 2.4 billion people send a text messages. The most recent The most recent stats I have are 192,000 text messages a second are being sent. So that's kind of a lot, I suppose. And in this holiday season, as we choose to send text messages, Happy Christmas or otherwise, all I can really ask is please do so safely. These things are awesome technologies. It helps in so many ways to send texts, to stay informed of where things are at, what's going on, you know, where's the thing. But please be safe. Please be smart and do this in a responsible way, because we'd rather you be late to someplace than really do something silly and not get there at all. So as we celebrate 20 years of SMS texts, SMS, again, stands for Short Messaging Service, by the way, SMS, Short Messaging Service. This was not a short message, but with that, thank you, and here's to, I'll text you later.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
It's hard to follow everybody. Well, I'd just like to thank the parade committee and everybody involved in the production of that parade on Friday night. It was, on Saturday night, it was wonderful. I think the weather was nice, personally. I mean, we would have rather had 32-degree weather with white ground and fluffy snow falling, but for the ambience for the occasion. However, 52 degrees really beats 10 below. So it was, which we've had a few times in the past. So it was a very nice night weather-wise. The people did a wonderful job, the floats were beautiful, and of course, Santa Claus was awesome.
It was. Councilmember Blanchard?
I have a couple of things. I would like to say thank you to the Santa sleigh repair crew. They did a tremendous job tearing apart the Santa sleigh and taking off all the old plywood and putting new composite on it and making it look like it's brand-new. And that was quite an undertaking, because I was up there a couple nights, and they worked hard. They did a lot of work, and so it was a good, it was a great job, and thanks to those guys. I apologize for missing the tree lighting. I was otherwise engaged, because I was in the lead fire truck, and we had a fire run, so I didn't make it back in time for the tree lighting, so I apologize for that. But riding into parade and seeing all the kids there that were waving to us, it was just fantastic. It's one of the best things that we ever do in this city, and the children are out there just having a great time. And last but not least, the Chamber of Commerce is having a board meeting on 12:12:12 at 4:00 PM, and for Chamber members, a party from 5:00 to 7:00 at Crispellis. So look forward to seeing all the businesses and Chamber members up there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa?
Councilite, too, would like to express my appreciation and congratulations to the parade committee and to the Junior Women's Club. You're absolutely right. The parade was awesome, and it was a lot of fun watching the children's faces. It was tremendous. So congratulations to them. Great, great job. You know, last week, I was not feeling very well up here in front of everybody, and I could barely stand here, so I had to leave abruptly, so I apologize, but I thank you for understanding. But you know, one of the key things, and I think the council has already said very clearly, that, you know, it's the staff and the volunteers that make the city of Berkeley a great place to work. And since I had to leave very quickly and I could barely sit in my chair last week, I would like to take this time and personally, again, thank some of our employees for their tremendous work, because without them, I don't know what I'd do. First, I'd like to express my appreciation and recommendation for Hard Hard Work is our city clerk, Cheryl Prince. Great job on the elections. We received a lot of accolades from people all over the city of Berkeley for your great job. So thank you, Ms. Prince. Great, great job. I know that your assistant, you know, Annette, is also very instrumental, but you are the director, so congratulations and excellent, great, great job. Thank you.
Very much.
Next, I didn't get a chance to, again, thank Sergeant Andrew Hatfield. It's kind of hard, I still see him as Andy when he first started. But again, Andy, congratulations. I think I've known you for quite a while, and at the parade, he brought all his children with him. So it was really cool to see him there. And also, I'd like to congratulate Scott Smith, too, for, I remember him, too, when he was just first starting, and Chief Eshman, working with both these individuals to bring him where they are today. So congratulations to both of them. And lastly, I'd like to recognize our finance director, Mr. David Sabuda.
Oh, thanks. Thank you very much.
For his amazing leadership and all his hard work with his staff for receiving the, again, the JFOA Award, Budget Presentation Award, that is no easy task, and he's been doing that now for the past few years. Mr. Sabuda, congratulations to you and your staff. Excellent, excellent work. And I know that I've been bugging you for several years to get the CAFR, and we're finally doing it. And again, much appreciation and congratulations to your staff for doing this. It's, again, it's extra work, and council, I couldn't be more lucky to work with tremendous group of individuals. And with that, thank you very much for allowing me to be here. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I would second what Mr. Sabuda said. I have nothing this evening also, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. We have grown accustomed to my colleague here, Councilmember Baker, offering us a quote, and he had a very wonderful one this evening. Again, I'd like to create one. A short agenda does not necessarily mean a short meeting.
We quote you on that.
We just need to take communications off of the... So, but just a couple of quick items. Thanks to the Holiday Committee, Paul Swayze and Cindy Coon, for their leadership. It was a marvelous occasion, the parade, and all of the volunteers who participated in the Junior Women's Club, who do so much for this city. They're involved in nine-tenths of the activities that happen in this town, and many of them are also successful enough to sign up their spouses to provide a lot of help. So we thank them. We congratulate Scott Smith. I think it's a great day for our city to see the swearing-in of Scott Smith. Thank you to Jane for the $1,000. I think it reflects your conscientious approach to your job. A lot of people in your role would consider that $1,000 theirs. And so we can be very proud to have a city manager who manages city money with such a conscientious approach. We're very proud of the work that you do. And on that note, Ms. Prince, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Stedman, supported by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
I'm sure we don't need discussion on this?
No.
Yes. Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Um, yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dooley?
Yes. Can we censure her?
Yeah.